Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene city councils, etc., agency to the Westminster redevelopment Agency meeting right now, seven twenty P M. Wednesday, April twenty eight, twenty twenty one. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ta.
Here.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Doe.
Here.
Councilmember Ho.
Here.
And Councilmember Manzo.
Here.
All councilmembers are present.
Thank you so much. Next, we have salute to the flag will be Councilmember Manzo. Invitation will be city attorney. So please stand.
Please join me in saluting our nation's flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come tonight and discuss the people's business. We ask that you would help us, help the decision makers to be able to sift through these issues and to act in accordance with what is best for the city and its citizens, be with staff and with the public as we seek to add to the conversation to enable wise decisions to be made. We just commit this meeting to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Manzo and City Attorney. Next, we have report from City Attorney.
There was two items on the closed session. There's nothing to report, but there was discussion on each of the items and direction was given to staff for with respect to each of those two items. Nothing for a little report.
Thank you so much. Ex parte communication? None? Report for?
Sorry, Mayor. Sorry. I did visit the site that's before us. I think it's item four point three.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Manzo. Okay. Next, we have report from City Council.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Just wanted to remind everyone that the city is holding its annual Black April event virtually this year. It will be aired on the TV's, the TV's channel as well as social media on our Twitter, Facebook and Instagram this Friday, April thirtieth at ten A M. And also I have emergency services coordinator, Robert Acosta here per usual to provide his COVID update.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Christine. Good evening, Mayor Ta, council and staff. Tonight's COVID update was going to be relatively short. I'll start with COVID. In California and Orange County, the numbers have improved in most categories and stabilized in others. Orange County, however, remains in the orange tier, which is tier two. The healthcare agency continually modifies their projections and currently the thought is we will likely remain in the orange tier throughout May. As a point of reference to make it easy to track is Orange County will need to have less than sixty five cases per day for fourteen days in a row to be able to be eligible for yellow tier criteria. And yesterday there were seventy three cases. So this means our fourteen day clock has not even started yet, and that's where they're coming up with at least through May on the projection. Internally, the city has no active cases and we still have no evidence of workplace transmissions. I believe that success can be attributed to the employees adhering to the workplace precautions and that's, they should be commended for that. We still have, have, the workplace precautions are going to remain in effect at this time. As of last week, the county health department has fully vaccinated over one point one million county residents. As you are aware, we had three clinics within the city and contributed to that success. The vaccine availability has significantly improved over the last week. And people can still receive a vaccine through the community pods, pharmacies, certain healthcare provider, healthcare providers, excuse me, and super sites. All these, all these avenues continue to vaccinate our public at a high pace. The Disney pod is expected to close April thirtieth, and the resources that support that effort will be sent to the other super sites to, to help them in their goal to vaccinate the community. The healthcare agency anticipates that all the super sites will remain open at least through July or until July. The city of Westminster continues onsite testing clinic at City Hall. It's five days a week. Testing availability has increased and the wait times have decreased. So you can get your test pretty, pretty easily now. For individuals that are already vaccinated, the CDC has issued new guidelines in reference to wearing a mask outdoors. The information is, is, is available on the CDC website, the C D P H website, and also Orange County Healthcare website, and it's worth reviewing. That's the end of report and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you so much for your report. Really appreciate that. Any, any question or concern from member on the city council? All right, I see. None. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. So next we have oral communication.
Yes, this is the time of the meeting where members of the public can address the city council on agenda or non-agenda items except for public hearing. Members of the public have five minutes to speak. We did not receive any requests in advance. However, if anyone would like to comment, please raise your hand. Okay, first speaker is Ramon Rodriguez.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and, and council members. I am Ramon and I've from Terlock, California, and I've read one of the news articles about one of your police officers that assaulted a woman with schizophrenia bipolar disorder a few days ago. And I've been at various city council meetings from various cities to explain about the police brutality issues. But now this is the time to speak about because that officer that punched her needs to be fired from the force as well as facing criminal charges. However, the two officers that were there that day prevented that officer to punch the Sio Mara Garcia from harming her again. They should be commended for their actions to protecting and defending her from that officer because they know the world, the whole world is watching, police officers doing what, what nobody wants to see. So they should be commended for doing the right thing and earning public. And other thing with, with police and mental health issues, I'm not sure if you heard, but other, so many people around the whole country are demanding to have a mental health crisis programs in case of a person is suffering a mental health issue or crisis, should have a number, do you have a person who is a intervenes in certain situations involving mental health crisis to attend to them and help them instead of having to call the police because the police are not social workers. They're trained to use force. And and I would like, like to see implemented in Westminster because that incident is also a perfect opportunity to implement that program. And then the, one of the most successful programs is implemented in the, I forgot what city it is, but it's in Oregon and it's got cahoots. Basically, if a person has a mental health issue, they call nine one one or a different number and they'll request a mental health worker to come over and, and provide aid instead of having the police. So they will get the help that they need or go to hospital or psychiatric, psychiatric ward or instead of having a police. And two, it relieves, removes the duty of police to have to deal with a mental health situation because it's really hard for police officers to deal with a person with mental health issues. And second, when a person is suffering a mental illness or a crisis, he's a police officer, they will panic and run and a police officer will think they're resisting or afraid and usually ends up incidents like what happened a few days ago and also in Alameda, California, when three police officers kneeled on, on a man by the name of Mario Gonzalez. We need to prevent that happening in Westminster because when a police use excessive force that results in death, it does not look good for the city and the police force. And this is really hard to either explain, but I've been going every city council and explain the situation and what he needed to do. So that's why I'm here to speak about against police violence and also to to start having mental health intervention program in your city so that when a person's having a, a crisis, they can have a person from, from the intervention program to come and assist and help instead of having police. And that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for speakers. Okay. We have you know, you have Terry Rains, one moment. Terry.
Good evening. Well, folks, I think hell finally froze over at the last meeting. A new council majority voted to kill Sheldon Civic Center project. Better late than never. Thank you, Councilwoman Ho, for making the motion and Councilman Manzo and Doe for voting with her to end the project. The vote to kill the project was due to it not being in the city's best interest right now, but in my opinion, the E N A could have been outright terminated long ago due to Sheldon's lack of performance and flimsy unrealistic financial projections. Anyway, great job, Ho, Doe and Manzo. Item three point four is the housing element progress report. The city's fifth cycle arena allocation was only two units, a ridiculously low number. The city has only permitted one hundred and eighteen units for very low and low income households over the eight-year period. In twenty twenty, all of the building permits, sixty three, and entitlements one hundred were issued for above moderate income households, none for affordable units. In addition to the density bonus we offer, perhaps the city should consider a new inclusionary housing ordinance that would mandate affordable units be built in any new housing development. The ordinance could mandate a percentage be built for extremely low, very low and low income households, depending on the project size. The city must step up its game quickly because the six-cycle arena number is nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine units. Item five point one is to cancel four council meetings for the remainder of the year. I understand the two near Thanksgiving and Christmas, but I think only one of the other two dates should be canceled. The city is facing serious issues. There is a lot of work to be done and everyone needs to put in one hundred and ten percent, including council staff and the community. Item six point one is to discuss political sign regulations. Thank you, Councilman Manzo, for bringing this item forward. I reviewed state and local political sign regulations and an abundance of case law on this subject. Most cities do state a maximum time before an election when signs can be placed, usually sixty to ninety days prior to election day, so we can safely add that to our code. And most cities also require signs to be removed within ten to fifteen days after election day, so we can safely amend our code to a shorter timeframe than the current thirty days. Regulating sizes less clear. Courts have ruled inconsistently on size restrictions. We currently allow political signs up to forty square feet, which is generous. California Business and Professions Code fifty four oh five point three defines a temporary political sign as a sign which A encourages a particular vote in a scheduled election. B is placed not sooner than ninety days prior to the scheduled election and is removed within ten days after that election. And C is no longer than, larger than thirty-two square feet. So it makes sense to amend our political sign regulations to closely align with the state's definition of size and placement restrictions, and that is my recommendation. Any stricter regulations for political signs only as opposed to all temporary signs can be deemed unconstitutional for adding restrictions based on sign content. Item six point two is reaffirming the declaration of a local emergency. And I know this probably helps us get funding and allows the city to take certain actions during the pandemic, but I question some of the wording in the resolution now, which may or may not be necessary, such as the items of confirmed cases and deaths continue to increase and conditions of extreme peril to the safety of persons and property continue. Westminster has made the news a few times this last week. Thank you, Chief Campos, for taking swift action and posting a press release within twenty-four hours after the PD incident. And thank you and Deputy Chief Upstill and the department for considering my three suggestions on how to improve incident reporting and department transparency to the community. Friday marks the forty-sixth anniversary of Black April, the fall of Saigon. Several Southern California A R V and veteran groups are upset with Mayor Ta, Van Tran and Len Quikwin over the planning and design of the Second Battle of Quan Chi Monument, saying it was planned and secret without input from those who actually lived it. Not all forces were consulted and not our, all are being fairly represented. Many only learned about the project when they were asked to donate funds to build it, which didn't go over well. So Mayor Ta went to San Jose this past weekend to raise money for the project, promising to honor donors of five thousand dollars or more with a plaque on the monument with their names on it. Plaque will also honor the mayor and council members. Mayor Ta, just like the Sheldon project, leaving your own personal legacy seems to be more important to you than respecting and listening to the community. Shame on you. Thank you.
Okay, last are, I have another speaker, Roger Mindrum.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, city council, my fellow residents, hello. First, I'd like to thank whoever brought this up on the agenda regarding the political signs. This has been a sore subject for me for a very long time. This is long overdue to put limitations on political campaign signs. We want to see a quantity limit. We also want to see a size limit. We don't want to see these humongous four by eight huge signs. Mine's bigger than yours. Just really goes so far, doesn't it? Should be a maximum of two by three on the pure reason that it is blight. It's ugly. It makes the city look trashy. I mean, seriously. We've all seen street corners with every single candidate signs. What do you think is the psychology of that to get someone to vote for you over the other candidate when they're all right there? And for you to see who's is bigger than the other guy. Seriously. Get something done about this. And thank you for hopefully getting something done on this. Next, just a quick comment on the use of force by that police officer. Very disturbing for a lot of people. Also disturbing to see on some of the social media that some people actually thought that was okay. Really disturbing for a lot of people. Really, really wrong. I believe the residents of Westminster deserve to know more about this. What is the officer's name? Why hasn't it not been publicized? What is the timeline for the internal investigation? So we can know what is the discipline, what it will be, and I believe the people deserve to know more about this. So police chief, mayor, city council, please make this a priority to be transparent. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Jody Boyd.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. I would like to speak a little bit to agenda item. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I would like to speak a little bit to agenda item four point three. That, that the remodeling of the Chevron station.
Sorry, sorry, Jody. You would speak about the public hearing item during public hearing. That's the only, that's the only time you can talk about a public hearing item is during.
Perfect. Then I'll be, I'll put my hand down for now.
Okay, sounds good. So at this time, are there any additional speakers? Mayor, I have no additional speaker.
All right, so thank you so much.
Yep, nope, I have no additional speaker. Sorry.
Close oral communication. Next, we have consent calendar. Or may I just list under the consent calendar, I consider routine and maybe approved by a single motion followed by roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless member of the city council or staff request that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for a separate action or discussion.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
A second. All right, we have a motion and second to approve the consent calendar.
Yes, that's a motion by Councilmember Ho, seconded by Councilmember Manzo to approve the consent calendar. Roll call vote. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have public hearings.
Yes, due to COVID nineteen restrictions, changes have been made to the public hearing process in order to ensure members of the public may participate remotely. Members of the public who wish to address the city council were able to submit comments in writing up to twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. In lieu of written comments, any members of the public who wish to verbally address the city council during the public hearing may request to speak in advance, which we received none, and, or they can just raise their hands when that time comes for the meeting. Speakers are eligible to speak for five minutes each.
Thank you. So I'd like to open public hearing item four point one with abatement spring twenty twenty-one. So, Councilmember, do you need a stop report? Okay, so please.
So good evening, Mr. Mayor and the city council members. This item is for the spring weed abatement program, which required by the state law twice a year during spring and fall, staff will bring the resolution to the city council, which requires the property owner to remove wheat and trash from their vacant lots. Currently, we have thirteen private property on the weed abatement list. In March of this year, we sent out a early reminder letters to the property owner and then certified letters as well as following up with the phone calls. At the time of staff report and the resolution was submitted for tonight meeting, there was only five properties that have not been cleaned yet. As of today, I'm happy to report that all thirteen properties on the list either have been cleaned already or are in the process of being cleaned, especially the railroad right away. In addition to the spring and fall weed abatement programs and per request by the city council, that staff also sent out a friendly reminder letters in the other two quarters, reminding the property owners to continue maintaining their properties during those times. So that will conclude my report and I'm available to answer any question.
Thank you so much for your report. Do we have any mission or concerns from members of the council before we have public comments? I see none. So open for public comments.
At this time, if anybody wanted, wants to speak on this, please raise your hand. Okay. Okay, I have first speaker Terry Rains.
Good evening, Terry Rains, Westminster. I am wondering just how the city determines which properties are target for weed abatement under this twice-a-year program? Does the city staff drive around all around the city and looking for the problem properties? Or does the city rely on complaints submitted by the public or just revisit previously targeted properties? Why are only vacant properties targeted under this program? I ask these questions because there are numerous properties in the city, both vacant and occupied with serious weed and rubbish, rubbish issues as defined under chapter thirteen, article two of the Government Code of the State of California, commencing with section three nine five six zero, that never seemed to be cited. I would call your attention to the fact that article three was renumbered to be article two back in, during the nineteen fifty-five legislative session under chapter six twenty-four. The city's resolution should be amended throughout accordingly, right? Former Councilman Contreras asked back in twenty nineteen for the process to be done four times a year versus only twice a year. Staff response was basically it would be too much work to undergo the formal process more than twice a year, but said they will continue to use code enforcement and the community preservation unit to address these issues on a more regular basis. Bottom line, that plan isn't working. Some areas of the city seem to be targeted more frequently for citations while other areas are completely ignored. The number of unkempt properties in the city continues to grow, creating extreme blight and potential safety hazards, which leads to lower property values and reduce pride of ownership in our city. Since we do not know if or when another local tax measure will be approved by the voters or even put on the ballot for that matter, I think the city should do as much work as possible now while we have the major SS money. Let's all put in a concentrated effort to clean up our city. Many cities hold pride and beautification events at least once a year where volunteers, along with support from the city, come together to clean up their city. Some are part of O C United's Unite for Cities initiative, which brings together businesses, residents, schools, service groups and the faith community, community to improve their cities. I did see a post on Nextdoor where one woman felt that way and she started a little movement there in her area, which was great. I realize my comments tonight are broad in nature, not specific to any of the properties listed in tonight's agenda report, but I'm just trying to be a part of the solution by offering input and ideas on ways we can approve our city related to this item. Thank you for your time.
All right, so staff, would you like to respond that or? Any, any comment?
Let's finish, Jody. We have one more speaker.
Okay, sorry.
We have one more. Sorry.
Hi, everybody. Yes, weed abatement is a great topic and I know that we're here to talk about weed abatement and cleanup of empty lots, but I do want to touch upon what is the process for reporting or helping code enforcement discover homes where the yards are completely unkept, weeds six feet tall in the backyard and in fact, we can see them over the fence. There is a house in my neighborhood at the end of my street that has been in unoccupied for at least fourteen years, if not longer. It is owned but by two brothers who are in a disagreement whether or not to sell. So there it sits, but not only is it an eyesore, but the weeds are just horrible. We have rusted vehicles sitting in the driveway. So how would code enforcement discover that or is this something that I or a resident should report? And that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Camilla Overbeek. Camilla?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, council. So while we're on the topic of weed abatement, and I understand how important it is to beautify the city and keep everything well-kept. I also think it's really important for this council to figure out how to ensure that we also keep our medians clean. If we're going to impose sanctions or anything like that and rules and regulations on businesses, I truly do believe that it's really important for the city to also keep in mind safety. When you're traveling down beach from Hazard to Westminster, either north or southbound between those streets, the hedges and trees and other plants that you guys have planted throughout the years are completely overgrown and are actually, to make a left-hand turn to any of the side streets, you have to be sitting in an SUV to be able to see oncoming traffic from certain lanes. So I hope that at some point while we're discussing weed abatement and landscaping, that we can also keep in mind that perhaps the city should also abide by their own standards. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last call for speakers. Okay, I have none, no additional speakers, Mayor.
Thank you so much. So I'd like to close public comments and staff. Would you like to respond to some of the concerns from member of the community?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. To answer the question about, you know, what properties that we added to our weed abatement list, before we have about sixteen properties and some of those properties had been developed. So we removed them and then we added all the property that has been, it's been removed, the building or been vacated such as there the one right at the corner of Beach and Bosa that was added. it's been removed, the building or been vacated such as the one right at the corner of Beach and Bosa that was added to the list this year. Any other property that have the building or structure on a lot, you know, if the resident can see the weed issue, they can call the code enforcement or CBU, they can go out and take care of those directly with the property owners. To address the concern about beach border of our medians and we do maintain them once a month. And we absolutely will take a look at those left turns pockets and see if any side visibility issue. Last year, we have come out, come out and trimmed those bushes or brush back to to provide a better side visibility. So we're definitely going to visit those area again.
Thank you so much for that respond. Really appreciate that. And now council action. So I move to approve, ask recommended.
I second it.
Can I make a, can we take some of those comments? Jake, can we also look into that? I know this is for motion is for for vacant lots. But can we also look at to occupy lots? I know there's some quite a few out there that need some addressing as well. If you guys are out there driving around, you spot some, you're gonna contact the property owners about those as well.
Absolutely. We can work together with code enforcement and CPU to address those issues, those lots.
Beautiful, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second now on the floor. Roll call vote please.
So that was a motion made by Mayor Ta, seconded by Vice Mayor Nguyen, and it's to overrule any objections received at the subject public hearing for the abatement of weeds, which were none. And adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster Determining and Declaring That Certain Weeds Are Growing Upon Certain Streets, Sidewalks, Parkways, and Private Property in the City of Westminster, and Rubbish and Refuse Have Been Deposited Upon Sidewalks, Parkways, and Private Property in the City, and That the Same Are a Public Nuisance, Ordering and Directing the City Manager to Have Said Weeds Destroyed and to Have Rubbish and Refuse and refuse removed as required by law." Roll call vote for that. Council member Do.
Yes.
Council member Ho.
Yeah.
Council member Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Next item four point two, adoption for our final fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two annual action plan for community development block RAN CDBG and Home Investment Partnership Act program federal funds. Staff report please.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Michael Sun, our housing specialist, will be presenting the staff report this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Michael Sun. I'm the housing specialist. And at the previous meeting on March twenty-fourth, council initiated a thirty-day public comment period of our draft annual action plan for the use of CDBG and home funds. So tonight's meeting is to adopt our annual action plan and authorize the city manager to sign the necessary agreements in time of the deadline in May. I'd like to point out that the city did receive notification of a slight reduction in CDBG and a slight increase for home funds. Both of these funds are based off of HUD's formula, so funding will vary from year to year. And at the last council meeting, there was mention about our unallocated home funds. Staff is recommending to set aside those funds for an affordable housing project. At this time, we don't have a project in the pipeline, but with the upcoming Rena numbers, we're hoping to set aside some funds towards a smaller affordable housing project. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Any question from member of the city council before open a public comments?
I just have a request really on on the, just one of the the I, the items as far as the the code enforcement for the neighborhood pride inspection. I was wondering if I can, it's a good project and and we desperately need that service. I was wondering, can we, can we get a a report, you know, of of addresses, issues, and and then what direction's been taken to address issues when they come up? I don't know if monthly, bi-monthly, or can we get some sort of report like that through from that code enforcement program?
Yes, so they, all of the sub recipients do have to do reporting back to us. There's, there's a lot of paperwork associated with this. So we can certainly work on sharing some of those statistics with you on a quarterly basis.
Okay, quarterly, okay. Can we do it a little sooner as far as just that one? Maybe three, something.
Would you like, like a maybe a recap of this last year? Would that be a helpful place to start?
I would like to see that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, any, any other concerns, any any other question from a member of the council? I see none. So open for public comments.
First speaker is Jody Boyd.
Hi. I enjoyed listening to the presentation and I did thoroughly read through the agenda item and the attached paperwork. I have an ask and that is for three million dollars. So we can get started immediately for rapid rehousing of either our current homeless individuals that are on the street or that have already gone to a shelter and are currently in some sort of a temporary housing. So we could get them more permanently housed. My vision is to be, these would be small, single-room occupancy studio apartments. But I would like to see that definitely on our action plan and let's start allocating, you know, with a lot of zeros behind it. But I think this is our chance in history to really get either purchase or get the housing built that we need. Our last homeless census was about a hundred and fifty-four people. Even we have a fifty percent success rate in getting these people to exit the street. Ultimately, they need someplace to go. So we need roughly seventy-five apartments for very, very low-income individuals. So we can help people and give people a fresh start. And to be honest, it's, it's life-changing and it saves lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Terry Rains. Terry?
Good evening, Terry Rains Westminster. Are you tired of me yet? Anyway, since this is a public hearing on this item, I'm going to repeat some of the comments I made about the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two annual action plan during the March twenty-fourth city council meeting. Sadly, only fifteen percent of CDBG funds can go to service-based programs, calculated only on the current entitlement, not on any carryover funds. Again, it would be great if staff could provide a comprehensive report of last year's programs to ensure the best use of these funds going forward. Echoing what Carlos Councilman Manzo requested, for example, how many code inspections were done last year under the multifamily inspection program? What was the outcome of those inspections? Was there a notable arrest of decline in the targeted area? How much revenue did the city collect in related fines? And was that revenue recorded as credits against CDBG expenses or as general fund revenue? Were the affected property owners provided detailed information about the multifamily rehab program? I ask these questions because zero owners applied for the rehab assistance, zero. Perhaps the city should consider expanding the inspection and rehab programs to include single-family homes in the targeted area, both rented and owned in addition to multifamily rental properties, to ensure all of the funds are used and as many residents as possible benefit each year. The city should prioritize housing and community needs over street improvements for these funds. Code of Federal Regulations, Section five seven zero dot two zero zero seven prohibits use of these funds for general government expenses or maintenance and repair of public facilities. I'm not saying the proposed uses are in violation, but the street improvement application did say it is to achieve citywide street improvement goals. One point four million home funds are being allocated to an affordable transitional or permanent rental housing project, which is great, as long as a project actually materializes and is truly affordable for the very low, extremely low-income households. Thank you for allowing me to provide my input.
Thank you. Last call for speakers. I have no additional speakers, mayor.
All right, so I close public comments now. Mayor and council member discussion. Any question, any concerns? If not, may I have a motion? So I move as recommended.
Second it. I second it.
Thank you. Okay, so that was a motion made by Mayor Ta, seconded by Vice Mayor Nguyen. That's to approve the final twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two annual action plan and authorize the city manager to execute the documents required for submission of this funding approval for CDBG and home funds to United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Roll call vote for that action. Council member Do.
Yes.
Council member Ho.
Yeah.
Council member Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Thank you. Next item four point three, appeal to planning commission approval case number twenty nineteen thousand one fifty-seven involving amendment to conditional use permit for the development for the new service station and convenient market. A conditional use permit for up sell B and Y type twenty ABC license development review and variance for a reduced rear yard setback pertaining to property located at five nine nine two Westminster Boulevard. Boulevard Assessor, verse number one nine five dot one forty-one dot zero one. May I have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have a number of staff members here who are ready to assist and answer questions, including our planning manager Steve Ratke, Adolfo Zeta, wearing his transportation manager hat. And our presentation tonight will be given by associate planner Alice Tu.
Good evening, Mayor Tretah, members of the city council. I will go ahead and share my screen for a PowerPoint presentation. This item before you is an appeal to case number twenty nineteen one fifty-seven considered by the planning commission for the reconstruction of an existing gas station at five nine nine two Westminster Boulevard. The subject site is located at the southwest corner of Westminster Boulevard and Springdale Street in the C one local business district. To the west and to the south of the property is the Westminster Plaza Shopping Center, also in the C one district. To the north is the seventy-six gas station and the, and a motel in the C one district. To the northeast of the site is the Jiffy Lube and the Carvana Properties in the C two general business district. And to the east are local retail centers in the C one zoning district. And here is an image of the existing site with the gas station, which has a canopy and a kiosk underneath. And there is also an existing pole sign. And here is an image of the rear of the property and currently there is open access right now between the gas station property and the adjacent shopping center. The applicant is requesting for the following entitlements. A development review for the development of the, of the site. A CUP amendment to amend the existing CUP and to expand the convenience market. A conditional use permit for a type twenty off-sale bear and wine license, which requires a public convenience or necessity finding. And a variance request for a reduced rear yard setback of five feet, whereas ten feet is required. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing site improvements, except for the pole sign and to completely reconstruct the site with the new canopy and a one thousand nine hundred and sixty square foot convenience store. And associated site improvements, including landscaping, parking drive aisles, et cetera. Currently, the business operates twenty-four hours daily and it will continue to operate twenty-four hours, Monday through Sunday. And here is an image of the existing site layout. As you can see here, there is open access between the two properties and there's five parking spaces that stripes between the properties. Here is the proposed site layout with the canopy and the convenience store located at the southwest corner of the site. This is a proposed site plan. Currently, there's four drive accesses into the site and they're being consolidated into two drive access to create a more efficient and safe circulation pattern. A total of eight parking spaces is required and provided there will be a new pedestrian walkway along the convenience market that connects to Springdale Street. A total of seventeen percent landscaping will be provided on site, whereas fifteen percent is required. So there will be landscaping throughout the perimeter of the property. And here is the proposed floor plan. And here, the area shown in red is where the alcohol will be displayed and sold. This is an image of the existing kiosk. There's a mini mart in there. And here is the proposed convenience store. As you can see, a variety of architectural features is incorporated to enhance the design of the building. It incorporates stone veneer, windows, metal awnings, a multi-colored color theme, score lines, and varying parapets and roof heights. This elevation on top is the north elevation that faces Westminster Boulevard. It's the front entrance. And below is the east elevation that faces Springdale Street. And here is the rear elevation, which is the south elevation that faces the adjacent shopping center, faces the retail tenants. And below is the west elevation that's also faces the adjacent shopping center and faces the parking lot side. Here is the proposed canopy and it's designed to match the architectural features of the, of the convenience store. The applicant is requesting for a variance to deviate from the minimum required rear yard setback. The required rear yard setback is ten feet, as shown here. And here's the proposed setback of five feet along most of the rear elevation and a four-foot setback along a smaller portion of the building. The item was considered at the planning commission public hearing on February seventeenth. At the time, representatives from two different property owners spoke in opposition to the project. One of the issues that was brought up is the removal of the five parking spaces that stripe between the property lines from the gas station property and the adjacent retail shopping center. According to our records, there is no legal shared parking agreements or access agreements between these two properties. And therefore, the removal of the five parking spaces or closing off the access will not be in violation of any types of shared agreements to utilize the stalls. Another issue that was brought up is that the building will obstruct the visibility of the retail tenants from the traffic, from surrounding traffic. Our city code doesn't have any stipulations that developments maintain a line of sight or view of adjacent buildings to the public streets. And lastly, one other issue that was brought up was that this, the placement of the building here would create a blind spot, create a blind corner as traffic that's driving down the drive aisle of the shopping center. And, and as they were making a right turn around the corner of the building. The applicant has proposed to a stripe, a stop sign here to slow vehicles down as they're turning the corner. This is something that is not required by the city. And we're not necessarily opposed to it. The applicant has obtained permission from the adjacent property owner to do so. According to the city's traffic engineer, he doesn't see any issues with with visibility or any safety concerns. So after considering all comments and deliberation, the planning commission approved the project with a five zero vote. Since then, during the peel period, KDW Westminster, which is one of the property owners of the adjacent shopping center, filed for an appeal. The city council may uphold, modify, or reverse the planning commission's decision. And this concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Really want to thank you for your presentation. I think you already explained about the parking spaces, but I just want to ask one more time for the record that there is no legal agreement regarding share parking, am I right?
That's correct.
Thank you so much. Any other western concerns from a member on the city council?
It is, it seemed to me that there are two. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
It seemed to me that there are two appear, two issues that the opposition want to appeal on this one is the five share parkings, which the staff already mentioned about it. And also the obstruction of, view obstruction of visibility. And we also heard it from the, from the traffic engineer confirmed that there is no problem with that. So I, I don't see what's the problem there.
Could you say, what did you check with the traffic engineer? Of what engineer? And you said there's no problem there? Vice Mayor, what did you just say?
Well, I, I heard that from the staff that just reported that saying that the staff, I mean, the traffic engineer already looked at that and determined that is not a problem. Am I correct? Can, can staff confirm that?
Yes, one of the issues that was, let me go back to my slide that shows it. So there's actually two, two issues that was brought up is one that's related to the building obstructing visibility of these tenants for traffic, you know, in the surrounding areas. The other was that this building, the placement of the building would create some sort of blind spot around this corner here as traffic is driving through the drive aisle when they're making a turn. And yes, I've, I've indicated that the city's traffic engineer has taken a look at this and doesn't see any issues with, with this corner, with any visibility issues or safety concerns.
All right. Thank you. All right.
Well, I just want to mention that you know, regarding the five share parking, well, we already know there's nothing we can, there's no easement or contract between the two. So I think at the time the the service station allowed the five parking spaces to be there and share that. And now, basically, that there's no legal ownership of the, by the party, by the opponent of the person who's appealing. So I think the, the service station is in the right to decide that he's going to deal away with those five state, five parking spaces, and he's going to build something that's more appealing or that's more fitting to.
Councilmember? If I may, we have the, the opponents, I believe, that, and maybe even the project applicant who want to speak. They, let's let them speak to, unless there's any questions of staff, probably best to let, hear from them, and then we can have a more full discussion.
Oh, yeah, sure. I don't know why we didn't ask them to speak, but yeah, love to hear from them. Thank you.
Right, so now I'd like to open public comments.
Actually, so it's actually not public comments yet, but at this time, we would be inviting the the appellant to speak first because the appellant is the one that appealing this, so.
Yes, please.
So let's remove the share screen. Okay, and then the appellant today is Sharila Bondock, and I apologize if I've mispronounced that.
She's on mute.
Oh.
Hi, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, City Council. So on February seventeen, twenty twenty one, the planning commission approved case number two zero one nine one five seven. In KDW Westminster, the property owner of the commercial retail building from five nine five four to five nine six zero Westminster Boulevard is requesting for the city of Westminster to reverse their decision. KDW Westminster has a, the prescribed easement right for the five parking spaces that the gas station plans to eliminate as part of the proposed plan to construct a one thousand nine hundred square foot convenience store. In KDW Westminster's legal right to the prescribed easement was created because it was never opposed by the owner after thirty plus years. And it was overlooked. Our, our right was overlooked by the planning commission during that meeting. And I'd like to show a visual. Can you see this okay? This is the five parking spaces that you could see half, half is on Chevron's lot, and the other half is on KDW Westminster's parcel. And as you can see, the, the five parking stalls have been striped as stalls for full-size vehicle parking, and they've existed there for over thirty years and have been continuously used by KDW Westminster and its customers for that. You could see the clear in this visual right here. Half is on Chevron and half is on KDW Westminster. It's clear that the use of these five parking spaces have been open and obvious, and the gas station owner has never taken any action to prevent creation, creation of an easement for the parking space. No signs have been posted to prevent creation of an easement pursuant to the Civil Code, section one zero zero eight. No action has been filed or maintained by the owner of the gas station within the five years after the use of the parking space began as required by Code of Civil Procedure, section three one eight. So removing these parking stalls from KDW Westminster's parcel is a clear violation of KDW Westminster's prescribed easement rights. Now, removing the five parking spaces, stop sharing this. Removing these five parking spaces located near KDW's building will now result in five fewer parking spaces for the customers of the businesses within the building to use and enjoy. We should make it less accessible for customers to patronize these small businesses. The location and the size of a larger convenience store will dramatically obstruct the visibility of KDW's building, causing the following negative impacts. There will be number one, less vehicles that will drive along Westminster Boulevard and Springdale Street that will be able to see our building, thus reducing the number of vehicles that will stop, park, and patronize its tenant stores and restaurants. Number two, less for the small business owners within the building, possibly putting KDW Westminster inside of business, some of which have been part of the Westminster community for well over thirty years. Number three, less rental income for the property owner, resulting in less sales revenue for the city of Westminster. Number four, increased difficulty to lease the spaces. Number five, reduction in property values for KDW Westminster. Now, if Chevron's plan is approved, KDW Westminster will be left with no other option but to secretly from the court, which will hold up any implementation of Chevron's plan. KDW Westminster supports the redevelopment of the gas station property, but in a manner that does not decrease the value or visibility of KDW Westminster's property and would include preservation of KDW's right to the five parking spaces with meaningful input from KDW Westminster as an adjacent property owner. Now, with all that said, we implore the city of Westminster, City Council, to help honor the legal rights of KDW Westminster and their prescribed easement rights and to help protect the health of the business owners within the commercial retail building from five nine five four to five nine six zero by reversing the planning commission's decision to approve the construction of Chevron's convenience store as per case number two zero one nine dash one five. Thank you for your time.
Really appreciate your presentation, and I have a question for our city attorney. Is anywhere that our city attorney can explain to all of us, member of the city council, the legal right of KTW Westminster regarding the share parking, because you know, all we all aware that there's no share parking legal document?
Yeah, I think what we should do is continue to hear the rest of the speakers. They may have some comments that relate on that, including the project applicant. And then I can certainly address things from my perspective.
All right, so do we have any?
Can I make a comment real quick?
Yes.
You know, could you, so as a city staff or the city attorney, could you take notes and fact-check all the sites and section that all the speaker brought up so that we can know which one's real, which one's not, please? Thank you.
All right, so do we have any other speaker?
Before we even get to our speakers, we have the applicant, the project, or I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, the project applicant, which is Carl Quee from Travis Companies. So, Mr. Quee.
Very well, thank you. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, good evening. My name is Carl Hoy with Travis Companies. I am the applicant on the project and also the, the project architect. Over the past nearly year and a half, we've had the pleasure and the opportunity to work with the city's planning staff and several of the other departments to bring a project to you that you see before you this evening. Over the last nearly eighteen months, we have had several generations of the project site plan that incorporated many requirements from many departments. There are several limitations and restrictions on the project site plan that have created the project that you see before you. Some of those deal with physical impairments in the public right of way, underground vaults, utility lines within the public right of way, and so on. We worked with the planning staff and the engineering staff, put a final site plan together, presented it to the planning staff, presented it to the planning commission. After, or excuse me, prior to the project being presented to the planning commission, we were advised by the planning staff that there was opposition expressed and per the request, and, and a very good request, per the request of the planning department or planning division, they asked us to meet with the opposition and discuss their concerns. We held a meeting out at the project site with one of the property owners who showed up for that meeting and discussed with them their issues and their concerns. As a result of that meeting, we were able to modify the site plan briefly, but we did do several items to the site plan, one of which was a revision to the landscape plan to remove tall canopy type trees that we had proposed in the site plan that they had indicated was an item that was of great concern to them relative to visibility. We questioned the planning staff to see if this was something that we could do within the site plan and still meet all of the requirements of the development code. That was one item. It was indicated to us that since we are exceeding the minimal tree requirement and the minimal landscape requirement per the city's development code, that we were in a position to be able to do that. In addition to, and doing that, I mean, remove those trees and create a more enhanced visibility corridor for that property owner. In addition to that, we did some modifications to some of the landscape planners to make it a little more, a little easier for onsite circulation and circulation around the property. After meeting with that, the project was presented to the planning commission on the seventeenth of September, at which the planning commission took public testimony from not only myself as the applicant, but also from the opposition. And at that time, elected to support our project by, if I'm not mistaken, a five oh, five oh vote. In regards to the development, this is a project, it's a multimillion dollar project that we feel is going to enhance the local community, definitely is going to change tax, tax increment for the property, and will add value to the surrounding area. As many of you, I'm sure, know that as new developments occur, it prompts or generates a need or a desire by other property owners to invest in their properties, which unfortunately has not been the case as was documented in the planning commission by the shopping center that has surrounded us for the, surrounded the property. And with that said, I request, formally requested the city council uphold the planning commission's approval of the project and allow us to proceed with the supplemental of our building plans for building permit acquisition. I am available to answer any questions should you have them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so so I, I guess that is time for public comments now.
Excuse me, Mayor, I have a question.
Oh, please.
Mr. Hugh. I have a question. You spoke about removing some of the, the trees from the plan. But then I read that the planning commission requested some trees to be installed. Are those the same trees or are they different trees?
Sir, they are different trees. I believe it was Count or Commissioner Anderson who requested for us to add additional trees along the rear of our project, which we agreed to, and we're in concurrence with that. And the, the, I believe, we are required to add three trees at the back of the building, and the two trees that we had removed were closer to Springdale to the east of our building.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes.
All right, so I guess now I, I open public comments then. There is no question or concern from a member of the city council. All right, so open public comments.
All right, so public comments, we did receive. We did receive two ecomments, so I will read those into the record first. First one is from Lisa, Lisa DeLucio Cavaleski, and it states, "City council members, I've lived in this area since nineteen seventy four, and what was once a thriving shopping center is now, is not a relic. We had several grocery stores, small restaurants, was a good place to go. We need a grocery store so bad back there, but with the center refusing to upgrade, not one store will move into that area. I'm in agreement, I'm in agreement with Chevron. It needs an upgrade and needs it now." Next one is from Paul Burner from Westminster, and it states, "I'm in, I am very much in favor of the Chevron gas station remodel upgrade on the corner of Springdale Westminster. Moreover, I am even more in favor of that entire shopping center to be either remodeled by the present owners or a forced sale to parties who would remodel it. That entire center has been an eyesore for decades." Again, that one's from Paul Burner. So those are the ecomments received. At this time, if anybody would Again, that one's from Paul Burner. So, those are the ecomments received. Um, at this time, if anybody would like to speak, please raise your hand. We have Jody Boyd. Jody?
Good evening, everybody. I carefully listened to both the appellant and the applicant. And I feel that our planning commission was correct to approve this application. I have lived in Westminster for thirteen years, all thirteen, in a neighborhood adjacent to the shopping center and the existing Chevron. And just redoing that Chevron, and I love the plan, will really do a lot for a shopping center that is truly an eyesore. And I hate to say that in front of the owner, but over here on the west side, that is one of two shopping centers that are rundown eyesores. In the thirteen years that I've lived here, I have not observed one single improvement to that shopping center. After the El Ranchito uh, market left, um, that building, which would be just perfect for Trader Joe's, a Sprouts, some, you know, upscale, maybe um, oh, Whole Earth Foods. Nothing, absolutely nothing was done. And when we did have the one point million dollars allocated to the west side for um exterior improvements, I feel, I feel that Eddie, because Eddie represented that he had tried contacting the owner to help spruce up that shopping center. And as we know, there were no takers when we had that money. So I urge the city council, and if you haven't already driven by this, please um, reconfirm our planning commission's um approval of this project. We really need it, and I can only hope and pray that it will help spur the owners of the shopping center to spruce up that shopping center. I will also note that the owner of the shopping center has definitely one sign on Springdale, possibly another one on Westminster that advertises what businesses are in that shopping center. Um, those signs are even run down. Just, you know, redo those signs with, you know, new lighted signs for the businesses that are in the shopping center. Um, maybe put some little, a little bit of money into some canopies over each business and put the business name on the canopy. These things are not expensive, but I urge um, the city council to uphold this. And let's move forward with something that is going to add to the beautification of the west side. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, next speaker is Terry Rains.
Good evening, Terry Rains Westminster. I sent an email to city staff over the weekend because when I first reviewed the staff report for this public hearing item, I noticed the substantial number of reports mentioned in it were missing from the attachments. Specifically, all of the reports listed under attachment six. The missing reports contained all of the detailed information presented to the planning commission in February for this project and were crucial to the council's review of the project and this appeal. At that time, the city council staff report was only seventy-eight pages long, and I did not receive a response to my email. But apparently, the missing reports were added sometime on Monday, and the report is now a hundred and seventy-four pages long. Uh, there was no public notification that the agenda report had been amended to add all the missing reports, but I really hope staff at least informed all the city council members immediately on Monday when the reports were added, so they could review them. That's a lot of information for council members to weigh through, and they need as much time as possible to do so. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing three hundred and eighty-four square foot convenience store and reconstruct a new larger nineteen hundred and sixty square foot convenience store along with three thousand two hundred and thirty-four square foot canopy over the fueling stations at the Chevron gas station at five nine nine two Westminster Boulevard. The new convenience store will offer snacks and prepackaged foods for sale, plus the sale of beer and wine, A B C type twenty off sale beer and wine license and continue to operate twenty-four hours per day, although alcohol sales will not be permitted between two AM and six AM. Because this site is a high crime area and there is already an oversaturation of liquor licenses in the area according to A B C criteria, though most of those are in Huntington Beach, the applicant must demonstrate that the sale of beer and wine would constitute either a public convenience or necessity per section two thirty-nine fifty-eight point four of the California Business and Professions Code and the local government governing body must make a formal determination of the same, or A B C will not issue a liquor license. This has been done and seems to justify adding beer and wine sales at this location. The applicant did a great job at that. A few property owners in the area objected this to this project application. In response, the applicant met with the owners at four fifty-nine sixty-two Westminster Boulevard to discuss their concerns and as a result incorporated three revisions to the project design. The conditional use permit includes a long list of stipulations the applicant must adhere to, and they seem more than willing to do so. After reviewing the entire hundred and seventy-four page staff report, my recommendation is for you to uphold the planning commission's approval of this project. We need to encourage more businesses in this city to improve their properties like this applicant is proposing to do. This will greatly improve the aesthetics of the area, something that is badly needed. If uh, the one property owner is that concerned over property values and visibility of their um shopping center, then as was previously mentioned, then they need to step up and make some improvements to their property because it it definitely is an eyesore. And um, you you certainly can't blame the lack of property values on something so spectacular being added uh there on the corner. Um, that can only help things. And I, I just, I just find it kind of unbelievable that they're claiming that it would hurt their property value. The parking, okay, yes, but there's no, uh, you know, she's using a code that they're basically saying, well, you let us use it for parking for thirty years. So it's kind of like squatters rights, I guess, you know, in a sense. And um, I don't buy that. I don't know who drew the the parking um, you know, lines. I'm not sure which property owner did that. I'm assuming it was the center uh, and that the the gas station just let it be. But it, you know, I I I fully support this project and I strongly uh feel that the council should do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Last call for speakers. I have no additional speakers.
So is that a time for city council deliberation or we still have, you know, pillen and applicant to speak for rebut?
Before you close the public hearing, if there's no other speakers, um, you you could ask questions and then close and then close the public hearing. Once you've done asking any questions of the applicant or of the opponents.
Appreciate that. Okay, so do we have any uh, any member from the public would like to speak in public comments? Our city club? I don't see anyone from the public.
Well, so, yeah, so you don't have any additional speakers for public comments?
Alright, so I'd like to close public comments. So any, any question from the member of the city council for, oh, pillen and uh, applicant? I see none, so I'd like to go back. Uh, to my question uh, for our city attorney. Please. Oh, please, okay.
Well. Um, so Mrs. Sharila Bandak, um, Bondak, she was uh, mentioned some kind of uh, symbol code regarding the five parking spaces. That's uh, that's her property uh, that have been, uh, you know, the customer's been using that for the past thirty years. What is that?
So, okay, I can, I can speak generally to it because I haven't looked at all the facts of the case, but um, based on my understanding, this issue was raised, staff looked uh, to see if there's anything recorded. Uh, and to their knowledge, nothing is recorded. There's no agreements between the parties about um, the use of this space. Um, all that being said, um, so the city and its 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 position doesn't have anything that's a recorded easement of any kind that would say that there's a right of the adjacent property owner to the, to that area. But they are making an assertion of what's called a prescriptive easement, which is not a recorded easement. It's something where somebody uses property such as was mentioned, like a squatting type right. Um, she did mention two of the elements that are involved in that, but she she failed to mention the third one, which is the most important. So the three elements are that there has to be a continuous and uninterrupted for five years use of the property. It sounds like they have been doing that. Second of all, there's open and notorious, which means it's obvious to everyone that they're using the spot. And I think everybody knew that those spots were being used, so that's probably established. The third one is the most difficult, and it has to be hostile. It has to be a hostile use to the owner of the gas station property, meaning they don't want him to use it, but they're still using it. And and the, that is the most difficult element to meet and probably the reason why there's no prescriptive easement here. Um, more than likely, I'm, again, I'm speculating, uh, both parties were fine using it. They allowed them to use it. You use half of, half of it's on one property, half of it's on the other. They both agreed. Um, that probably would defeat a prescriptive easement. Again, I don't want to make uh assertions. I think if the property owners here think that they have a right that um, that we're not seeing, they they have a right to go to court to have a court determine that. And a court would then issue an order, and then, of course, everybody would have to comply with that order. But the city is not the trier of fact here. We're, we're processing an application. We're looking at the obvious things such as recorded easements, um, property boundaries. And so the city council in a situation like this, assuming you wanted to approve this project, I would recommend that you would approve it. And if the adjacent property owners think that they have a right of some kind that's legal, they should go to court and have a court issue an order to the contrary, in which case we would have to comply with that, or the property owner would. Um, we may, in such case, we may have to move the property or move the building or something, downsize it. Um, but uh, my recommendation, based on what I'm seeing, would be to proceed however you want to proceed on this project. There are variances, there's a C U P. So you have discretion as as to whether or not you think this is a good project or not. Um, but with respect to the prescriptive easement, I think that's not something we want to get in the middle of. It's a dispute between two adjoining property owners over a right that's not clear.
Hey. So, I would like to say that, yes, when I um, as she was um, Bondak was talking about the prescriptive, prescriptive easement. I was looking it up and also I understand that there is no hostility. And so, um, as you mentioned, um, that it has to be one of the elements in order for it to be qualified as a prescriptive easement. And um, so I think um, the service station might have generously or amicably shared their space, their land for the particular use of five parking spaces for their neighbors to um, use. Um, as long as they have the space uh available. So now that the space is not available anymore because they want to upgrade their building, I think they have the right to do so. And of course, um, I, along with everybody that I have heard so far, um, speak on this topic, um, uh, besides the um, uh, opponent, that, um, I think that whole area that I used to live right there, um, I don't anymore, but you have always wished that we upgrade the area. And I believe, uh, there was a speaker earlier, Miss um, Jody Boyd, mentioned, and she's got a very, very good memory in regards to the loan, the hundred thousand dollar loan, uh, that was to, um, actually, we set aside one point one million dollars from our economic development fund. And um, it was going to be at a very low interest rate of two percent. Um, for, for that area, I think we were, at the time, I think we proposed to um, experiment with just one block, and I know that it includes uh, that particular corner and that, um, I wish, um, everyone there could take advantage of such a um, opportunity, but unfortunately, we had no takers whatsoever, not a one person um, who took out such a low, low interest loan, um, that would help to enhance that corner. Um, and other, of course, there were many corners that could have, uh, use an upgrade on the footpath. But that was the first corner we chose. And and so I wish that, um, to, um, I think to um, address the issues of number one is the service station is going to cover up. Uh, so blocking and obstructing, unfortunately, um, if it obstructs, I think it's within his right, the service station's right to build a new. Um, there's, there's, you know, a new and and it's within their right to upgrade their property. Um, nothing that would stipulate, nothing stipulates that they cannot do that. Um, it's, I believe that's within their rights uh to do so, and I think that, um, I would recommend that, um, uh, it's always, um, good to invest in your own building. Uh, I'm a, you know, um, um, building owner myself, and I think that, uh, you can always build one that is higher. Um, and and give, which will give you better visibility than you do have now. And then also, um, you will be more visible uh, next to the new um, station. So I think, um, um, that would take care of it. And then, you know, I don't know, I don't believe the hundred thousand dollar uh loan is there anymore. I believe we uh, took that money and we gave it to our businesses, uh, if I remember correctly. Um, to help with the COVID uh, situation for the businesses earlier in the year, if I remember correctly. But um, then, and then also the five shared parking spaces, as we said, I don't believe that there is a prescriptive easement. And I do agree with um, our city attorney that if there's anything to hash out, they need to take each other to court, and then we just abide by what the court rules, and I think that will be a safe position for our city to take. Um, and then the blind spot, the blind spot is taken care of by the tra- traffic engineer. And I do believe that our traffic engineer is very um, uh, capable. And I, I believe what he's telling me, uh, that the obstruction there is, um, probably uh, mitigated by what has been approved by the planning commission and, and um, uh, you know, and that traffic engineer, um, looked out for that. So, with that said, I, I'm all for the project. Um, I would uphold what the planning commissioner, uh, commission have approved for this case.
I have, I have a couple of um, observations and questions. Um, first, um, those are all good points, uh, councilwoman Ho. Um, I have a question. Somebody said that there was a sign on the Westminster Boulevard side of the property, the K D W property, but when I was out there, I didn't really notice any signage out there. I don't know if the staff remember a sign out there because I didn't notice one. Um, and the only signs I noticed one was that on the Springdale side was the existing Ranchito sign, which I think that may need to be upgraded and that it is looking pretty shabby itself. Um, and then the donut business has its own freestanding sign. But as far as the Westminster Boulevard, I didn't really notice a sign. Has any, anybody on staff have noticed, was out there and noticed one?
Um, the only two signs that um, I've seen is really the, like, as you mentioned, the Ranchito sign and the Winchell's um, sign. There does not appear to be any sign off Westminster Boulevard.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought. So, yeah, if you notice, um, there's many of businesses, many uh, properties where there's uh, similar to this situation where there's one building in front of other buildings. Um, but the difference is that those properties have signage. And they have signage where they're advertising uh, the the businesses in that, in the commercial property. And like I said, it's And like I said, it's obvious that this property is lacking. Lacking that that uh, opportunity for its businesses to be able to to um. Make their businesses visible from Westminster Boulevard or Sp- uh, Springdale for that matter. So I think that property owner for the the KDW should look into doing, making sure they provide that service for their tenants. Um, the other one that I observed is um, this is a code question for, I think, Steve. Um, and I think we, there was other cases that had this issue before. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but don't the uh, the same building has to have the same colored roof. Throughout the whole building, Steve. Uh, this building right now currently has two different colored roofs. Uh, the existing building in the back, it's got a blue and a, a portion of the building is blue and a portion of the building is brown. Um, it's the same material, but it, I think that code states that it has to be the same color, correct?
Yes, uh, yes, thank you, Councilmember Monzo. I would just say you're, you are correct. Um, that the, we city has development standards and design standards that apply to new commercial um, structures. However, I believe this center was built prior to um, in the nineteen sixties or early seventies. Uh, certainly prior to our current development standards and also prior to our design guidelines. So in a sense, it's kind of grandfathered in, uh, but obviously if they were to renovate the center, we hope they do one day. Um, there's a great opportunity to create a more consistent design that would improve that site.
And Steve, and Steve, isn't it also true that if they were to do that, they could increase the visibility of the businesses at issue?
That, that is exactly correct. In fact, uh, it's just my estimate, but I believe that the existing commercial building. Adjacent to the proposed service station is probably no more than twenty feet high, perhaps a couple of feet beyond that. However, the zoning code allows for structures in this particular zoning district, the C one district, to be up to thirty five feet high. So they would have an opportunity to literally increase the height of the building through parapet walls and other architectural features. That would allow them to place signs up a little bit higher and have a little more visibility from both Springdale and Westminster. While also taking that same opportunity to perhaps provide more onsite landscaping. Um, and doing other things that were mentioned earlier, canopies, uh, an arcade, things that just help to. Bring in the kind of businesses that the property owners, I'm sure, would love to have as tenants. But also bring in a little bit more life back into the center.
So Steve, so that that um, there's a new business there that took place of the old Ranchito business. Um, and that business painted um, their portion of the of of the space. So doesn't, so that's where, that's where I think where the two different colors came into play, so, so they don't have to match the. The the two cutters don't have to match.
Yeah, well, that's, that is the complicating factor. One, we have, so this center is uh, kind of grandfathered in from our current codes. But the other thing is that we have multiple property owners, so we have multiple parcels. So it's, it's difficult to, you know, if say the donut store wanted to renovate, but the other parcels didn't want to renovate. We can't force those other parcels to renovate to match. Um, unless those other parcel owners said, we, we'd like to renovate altogether. And then we could get, I believe, our code and our develop, our design guidelines would give us an opportunity to create. A greater sense of consistency of color and design.
So since this, since this building was built in the sixties and they're, they're prior to that code being implemented. So like you just mentioned, uh, so another business can choose to paint their portion of the building. And they can choose a different color, so we can have multiple, you can have five different, ten different colors on this building. I mean.
Yes, that's correct. Unfortunately, if an individual property owner came to us. Whether it's the, the former Ranchito Market, which is now Beauty Supply. Or any of the other per parcel owners came to us separately and said, I'd like to repaint my building. I don't believe there's anything that that would prohibit us uh, or would would keep them from painting something. As long as the color was consistent with uh, the design guidelines, which is is rather general when it comes to color. Just talks about certain um, bright colors like neon colors to avoid. Um, and we, we unfortunately, because those buildings are so inconsistent with our current standards. Any color they chose would probably be an improvement.
Okay. All right, thank you for that.
I know that we, I know that we, we talk a lot about the parking, uh, you know, uh, instrument, right?
I wasn't done yet, uh, sorry.
Oh, sorry about that.
It's all right. Um, yeah, so um, uh, a lot of the good points were made and. As far as the parking, it seems like uh, the way that that existing Chevron station was for all these years didn't. I think it was a kind of a gentleman's agreement that both properties. The way that the situ- the building, the way the property was situated, it was kind of gentleman's agreement that. First, you know, both properties can use them and, and there was no need for it at the time and now there is a need and. And you're right, that's between the two properties and um, in this business. It's a fact that this needs a, a major improvement and um. And this, this, we can't stop, uh, we should be wel- welcoming uh, people like uh, the Travis Company to come and. Try to uh, improve our, our uh, sites like this, so I'm in definitely favor of this project, so thank you.
Um, I know that we talk a lot about the, the, you know, parking easement and then things that happen, so I'm not going to talk about it. But I know that there is another, I hear another uh, concern from um, the opponent that uh. About the abstract visibility and I know that we have the traffic, yeah, uh, city uh, traffic engineer Adolfo. Uh, here with us in the meeting. Can I, can I get your input, uh, Adolfo?
Absolutely, sir. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmember, ladies and gentlemen. To to address your issue about that particular location, when it comes down to private property parking lots. Um, the most, uh, the most important thing to remember that the controlling factor really is the placement of the drive aisles. And guaranteeing that the drive aisles are of proper width and that the parking stalls are appropriate. And um, through our development engineer here at the city, we, we were able to verify all of that as it goes through the planning process. So I can state that all of the stalls in the um, private property area uh, meet the current standards. As it pertains to that particular location, um, where Alice pointed out earlier. That um, there was concerns regarding safety, that's very typical in any private property development, anywhere in the country. A good way to think about it would be uh, trash enclosures. Trash enclosures are often placed. And uh, you try your best to place it within the property, uh, to not obstruct visibility. This particular case, it's important to note that the drive aisles, they're not roadways, they are drive aisles, they're not alleys. And that these drive aisles are really intended to be operated at low speeds. So for that reason, the placement of the, of whether it's a trash enclosure or whether it's a building like, as is, as is uh, the case for this particular project. Does not constitute an obstruction from a traffic safety perspective.
Well, I uh, you know, I know that there's concern from the opponent, but then, you know, we have uh, heard from um. Our staff and presentation and uh, from traffic engineers and uh. I think that, you know, I I trust that that uh, our staff have done diligent, uh, you know, job on this one. And also the planning commissioners also have taken into consideration of all that uh, already brought up. Uh, and they have uh, approved for, approved uh, this case. So uh, I think that we have enough, um, to me, I think I have enough, so I go ahead and and um. Move to uphold the planning commissioner's approval of a case number twenty nineteen dash one seventy seven.
I'll second it.
All right, uh, we have a motion and a second to approve this project. Uh, motion second on the floor, uh, do we have any other question, any concerns from anyone? Regarding this project before we do a roll call vote.
Yeah, I like to make a comment, please. Um, you know, I, I certainly, I guess I'm very sympathetic for the uh, the palette. Uh, KDW Westminster, I totally, I uh, totally understand the concern. Uh, new developments certainly gonna um, bring obstruction to um, that particular strip mall. I'm, I'm, I'm familiar with that area. I parked in those parking spaces uh, years ago, you know, getting coffee at that kind of donut shop. So I'm very familiar with this area, but um, and and you, you spend um, a couple thousand dollars to go through that pure process. You know, to protect your interests. I totally understand that. I've unfortunately, um. We um, myself, I, I cannot uh, I have no um. Have nothing to uh, to overturn the uh, planning commission. The decision to uphold a legitimate uh, development in that particular area, so. Thank you.
I uh, I uh, I saw the uh, a pilling raise hand, so uh. But this is, I, I don't think this is the time, you know, I think, uh, but anyway, as our city attorney. Is that, is that a time to allow, um?
I thought we closed the public hearing, I think.
I, yeah, I think so too. Okay. So uh, we have the motion and a second on the floor, uh. Can we do a roll call vote?
Uh, yes, that is to, give me just a second, because I actually need the title of the resolution, which. I don't have on me at the moment. Apologize for that. I will. Pull that up real quick. All right, so that was a motion um, to uphold the planning commission's approval. So it's to essentially adopt a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster. Upholding the planning commission's approval of case number twenty nineteen dash one five seven involving amendments to conditional use permit. C six one four for the development of a new service station and convenience market. A conditional use permit for off sale beer and wine type twenty ABC license. Development review and variance for reduced rear yard setback pertaining to property located at five nine nine two. Westminster Boulevard, also known as Assessor's Parcel Number one nine five dash one four one. Dash zero one, and that was a motion made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Councilmember Monzo. Uh, so roll call vote for that, uh, Councilman Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Uh, next we have regular basis, item five point one. Revision to city council meeting schedule for the remaining uh, twenty twenty one. The city council, it's up to the city council. Um, staff, these are um, normally the date that we had uh, for several years, right? This is the, the holidays and, you know, uh, that's my understanding.
Yes, so mayor and members of the city council, so the dates that are presented to you, um, in the past, we would um. Because there's not a lot of business that, you know, that required two meetings during the summer months. In the past, we'd actually cancel one meeting out of June, one out of July, one out of August. And um, we obviously have a lot that's, that's going on, so um, as far as the summer month goes. Um, staff is proposing that we cancel the August eleventh meeting, which is the first meeting. Um, in August, generally there isn't anything um, during that time, uh, that's generally pressing. Obviously, if there's something that is pressing, you know, we've resurrected meetings in the past before that have been canceled. Um, so that's uh, you know, that, that, it's, it's basically, we're just asking for one summer um, meeting. As far as September eighth, that is actually the Wednesday after Labor Day. Um, in the past, we have canceled either the first or the second meeting in September, um, you know, anticipating lack of quorum. Um, in this particular case, because it's the week of Labor Day, I know a lot of people are generally off and, um, including, you know, residents. Who may, you know, maybe going out of town, might be a little different with COVID this year, but um, we're just anticipating um, that that's a possibility. And then uh, November twenty fourth is the night before Thanksgiving. Uh, and December twenty second is the Wednesday before Christmas and generally Thanksgiving Eve and um, Christmas week, we cancel those meetings. So um, this is pretty much what we're looking to propose for this year.
I think that even that if we approve, you know, uh, this schedule. Uh, if there is any urgent, any need uh, from uh. Uh, staff, we could, you know, have the meeting anytime, yes. With that, I move to approve. Second.
Okay, so that's a motion made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Mayor Ta, and that's to. Uh, approve cancelling the regular meetings of August eleventh, September eighth, November twenty fourth and December twenty second. Uh, roll call vote, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, you got cut off for a second there. Uh, Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Yeah, motion carries five to zero and of course, we'll be posting those uh, cancellations on our website.
Thank you. Next, we have item six point one, discussion of regulation pertaining to political site. May I have a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Steve Ratkare, Planning Manager, is here to present this to you tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, what we have before you is a brief memo. That describes the city's uh, current political sign requirements, is found in the city's sign code. Um, and uh, there's a summary, basically, in the report that talks about um, the requirements for political signs. It just mentions that uh, you're not required to obtain a permit for a political sign. They have to be removed within thirty days after an election. Um, and um, they cannot exceed forty square feet in size. And in addition, uh, there is no limit on the number of political signs. Uh, the current political sign provisions that the city has were adopted, um, I believe in nineteen ninety six. When the sign code was last updated and we're available for any questions if you have them.
I see the council, you have any question or concerns? Is it a time?
Could I interject something real quickly?
Please.
That is, um, the issue of signs is one that has been subject of litigation as of. Last couple of years and the Supreme Court has spoken to this, so there are very significant restrictions on what we can do. Um, we have to be very careful in how we regulate. We can't treat political signs differently than we do other signs. So we have to be very um, uh, across the board. So if, for instance, we ban all signs in the public right of way, um, that we can do because we're treating all signs equally. If we say that signs can be of a certain size, that's fine also, uh, as long as we're treating all signs the same. So this is something where um, trying to treat political signs, which is actually a very protected form of speech. It's one of the higher forms of speech um, uh, that the Supreme Court protects. We can't allow something like a real estate sign, but then disallow a political sign. So the Su- the Supreme Court would say that you're, you're establishing greater restrictions on a form of speech that is, has more protection. So what we need to do is be consistent. Um, we could focus on issues such as size. Um, you know, right now we have a certain size, we could reduce that size, again, it would apply across the board. Um you know, right now, we have a certain size. We could reduce that size, again, apply across the board. Um but we have to just be very careful. So what I would suggest is if you, as you have this discussion, um if you're, you know, that give staff the opportunity to go back and try to come up with some very content neutral um restrictions that would be compliant with what the law requires.
Alright, any member on the city council would like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um yeah, city attorney, yeah. I mean, my, when I brought this forward, my intent wasn't just specifically for political signs. I think there's a um, as you can hear even today's meeting, is quite a quite a theme about, I mean, I think the public is is um and the council, I'm sure, is aware that there's a pretty um strong will and want of the community to for us to clean up our city. And 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 I think everybody knows that when those big giant signs are a big eyesore. Uh and and I think, you know, for for me, I think for us to do that, I think, and and we would be leading by example, you know, I mean, uh to say that we 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 are contributing to helping to clean up our city. Um so it's not, my intent was, I mean, to make it all signs, not that just as political signs. Um so yeah, I'm not focusing on 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 the size and time of placement. Um I I know we wouldn't be the only city. I know there's other cities that do have a s- a smaller uh size limit. You know, there are some cities that have matched us. There's some cities that have do that do have a forty square feet, but they do they see some cities that reduce have six feet square, six feet is a limit. So we wouldn't be the the only city for sure. And I think it'll be a really big show to our community that, you know, we're we're in on it too. We're in on helping to clean up our city. Nobody likes those big giant signs. And I think nobody, any of us, really like putting up those big giant signs as well. Um I think we would just be leading by example. Um and the other thing that kind of that I noticed out there is that what contributes to the blight is that for whatever reason, you know, a lot of times those stakes that people use to put up those signs, they just stay there for years and for the next, until the next election for somebody else to use. So it just kind of become a stable part of the landscaping is those green stakes. They just stay there for two years, four years. And that's just us candidates contributing to the to the to the blight in our community. So yeah, I mean, I'm okay with directing staff to coming back with some more neutral language um as far as size and time of placement. Um just to make it an even keel with maybe what some other cities are doing. And I just feel that we just need to lead by example. So that's just um if my thoughts on it. Um I would like to hear what the councils um what the council thinks about this.
Alright, any other member on a council have any input on this matter? So Councilmember Ho? Do you like to have any input or no?
Well, I I know staff time is is quite limited. I'd love to support every agenda. I really um I'm just trying to prioritize. Um you know, I'm just thinking that um there are just a couple of thoughts. Number one is let's say if um people are running um a political campaign, and then when they're printing up signs, they print a separate set of signs and because our um you know, our measurements are different than the ones than other cities, so that I don't have an answer for. I mean, I would, I'm hoping that that's not going to be a huge burden on people. I mean, I'm not thinking of myself, and I'm not thinking of us only, us here only at the city of Westminster. And the other is that um I do agree with um cleaning up the signs. I do agree with um maybe shorten the time from thirty days to a shorter time period, ten fifteen days perhaps. Um and then um my 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 concern is staff time. I really think uh they're pressing issues that I I feel that uh I would like our staff to focus on because I do hear a lot of complaints on, you know, the just um any news, the planning and entitlement process, things like that. So if 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 I, if we could get to every agenda, um this would probably one of the prioritize it. This would probably be a low priority. Um so I don't have the answers. Uh so if if you ask me what's on my mind, that's what's on my mind regarding this topic. So.
Alright, so who would like to speak?
I would like to give my two cents about this. Um one of the thing that, you know, I'm, it may concern me is the the safety, if there's any. But I don't think there are any safety report to their staff as up to now. That's my belief. If there's any, then I I need to know. And at the same time, with the rest of, you know, with the rest of the the attorney, city attorney just mentioned it to us. I mean, you know, we have not get anything pro- I I mean that order, I'm not talking for myself, but I'm talking for as a whole that, you know, I see that the 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 campaigner, they are very responsible for the thing that they, you know, to remove the signs after the election. And they're also intimately putting the sign out. And again, no safety issues is i- is reported. And you know, and this is, I think, is a political speech, and they have the right to um to have the size during the campaign period. It's not there for the whole year. It's not there for, you know, uh 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 extra amount of time, but it's just it within the time limit. And uh, you know, it's been for several years, and we don't have any issue with that. I don't think that we need to fix something that is not an issues for the city. Uh so, uh you know, I I I don't see the problem with that.
Uh I told myself that I think that I agree with uh Councilmember Ho. Because you know, if we uh, if our staff, they spend a lot of time on this matter. I I believe we still have a lot of issue uh to look into it. So I honestly, I don't see this as a must do item. So that is me. So it's up to the council. What would you like to do with this item?
Well, hearing both uh from the mayor and also the the uh council member Ho, I think that, you know, um and and with what I I I see, I think that uh we shouldn't take any uh direction at this point. Uh first, we, you know, if we take the direction, then we impose more work to uh our um staff. And we can prioritize things that we need to do. Secondly, I don't think that, you you know, i- if not, if things are not broken, then I think we we need to move forward. Third, we can eliminate the possibility of, you know, uh violating the uh state law or federal law in term of uh campaign size limitation or restriction. So um you know, again, with that, I move to um not to do anything at this point.
Alright, so the motion is uh taking no action. What? Oh.
I need a second.
I'm sorry, so who's?
Councilmember.
Did you want to speak, uh Councilman Manzo?
No, I was I was wanting to hear what your opinion was. Okay.
Well, yeah, I I I agree that I understand that the campaign side is a protected speech, but the city, we can regulate uh the time, place, and manner. We certainly, we can, I I have uh I understand that there's several surrounding city that have set the limit of uh sixty day and ninety day before the election. Um and uh we can certainly, we can regulate that. Uh I I got kind of questions about the staff report. Uh forty square feet thigh limitation, am I mistaken? Forty square feet, right?
That is correct.
Eight by five, eight by five, right?
Yes, or are there any different dimension because you're forty square feet?
Okay. Um we we said, this is a time, if we want to regulate a political sign, this is a, this is a time because it's not an election year. And nobody running for uh running for reelection, and we need to, because um political sign, if we regulate political sign, it's affect everybody to come to our city and post inside. All the elected official, all those who run for public office will have to pay to the 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 city uh sign regulation. And I I I I I believe that we can do that. We set the limitation, uh whatever the council agree. Um so that that we have a uniform approach to uh time, place, and manner. And um I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I just, thank you. I just thank you all of you for your input. Oh. Um sorry about that. Thank you all for your input. Um I understand that it's not high on a priority list. There's a lot of other important issues. Um staff always is busy. That's no secret, yeah. Especially if you look at their titles, or some of them have multiple titles, so you know, obviously, they're doing a lot. But this is something that we would be doing for our community. It's not necessarily thinking about ourselves. You know, um and like a count like the our city attorney mentioned, it would just be a blanket across, not just a political sign. It'd be a blanket across. Oh, you couldn't separate the two political and any other sign. It would just have to be straight across the board to signs. I think council should think about, you know, this is the community doesn't like seeing those big old monster signs. That's just a fact. Um and we would be showing that we are leading by example, that we are willing to clean up our city. We're doing our part to clean up our city. And at the same time, you know, it's speaking politically as far as campaigns, you know, not every candidate can raise, you know, a bunch of money like other candidates. And I think this will even out the playing field. You know, those big old monster signs, that not every candidate can afford to buy, you know, a hundred of those big old monster signs. You know, if we re- we reduce the size, it kind of kind of shows that we're, it shows that here in Westminster that we we we're we're an even uh an even keel city, and we're we're playing by more fair rules, and we're making it easier for candidates to be able to run here in the city. You know, there are some candidates that, there's some people out there that may want to run for council, but they just know that they probably can't raise that 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 kind of money that others can. So that's something else to think about. You know, um like I said, we wouldn't be the only city we uh with the we a smaller limit on size. You know, just try to be bold, try to be bold and do something, something that like Council Vice Mayor Wayne said, it's not broken yet, it may you may not, he may not think it's broken, but it is because our city needs some work. We need to clean up our city. It's serious. And we just finished listening to a uh that that case on Springdale, like our city is blighted. There's a lot of areas that are blighted and and when it comes to uh certain time of the years, you know, there's a million signs everywhere. It just adds to the blight. Um I don't know. It's just my take on it. So if the council don't want to support it, um so be it.
And and let let's uh let us not forget that, you know, it's is uh is allowed to put on the private property only, not from the city property. So that's one thing that we have to understand too.
So that means that it's up uh I thought to the private property owner. So we have the we have the motion by Vice Man Wayne that we're going to take no action on this item. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I second uh the motion. Roll call vote.
Okay, so take no action. So just review, file the report. Okay, roll call vote, Councilmember Doe?
Uh no.
Okay. Councilmember Ho?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Manzo?
No.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries three to two with Councilmembers Doe and Manzo voting no to receive and file the report, take no action.
Okay. Next item six point two, resolution reaffirming proclamation number twenty twenty dot zero one and resolution number four nine eight three uh with declaring the system of a local emergency. May I have?
Both of them.
Second.
That's a motion made by Councilmember Doe, seconded by Mayor Ta to adopt a resolution entitled A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, reaffirming proclamation number twenty twenty dash zero one and resolution number four nine eight three, which declared the existence of a local emergency. Roll call vote, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next, we have comments and requests for agenda item from city council agency member, including AB one, two, three, four, report when required. So Vice Mayor?
Uh yes, uh with the mayor and city council and staff. Um first of all, I would like to take the a moment to remind each one of us that we are in the last week of April. And the city of Westminster recognize uh this week as a Black April Memorial Week um uh in twenty nineteen. And uh this year marks uh the forty-six years of the Fourth of Saigon, and um the Vietnamese community here uh in Westminster and abroad uh still remember these days as a their nightmares uh for them uh each and every day. So uh this year on April thirtieth, uh the city of Westminster will commemorate uh the memorial virtual on channel three at ten AM as reminded by the city clerk uh at beginning of the meeting. Uh I have quite a few orders Vietnamese TVs and radios agreed to broadcast uh on their stations. Uh not to mention, it will will widely posted on social medias. So um uh with that, I also uh would like to thank you, thank to uh our staff, especially the city clerk, uh communication director, Christine Corden, Corden, for her tireless effort in uh coordinating um with the PCTA uh to pre-record it uh the video clips that will be used and air on the day of um uh April thirtieth. Uh and I also want to kudos to uh PCTA staff, their professionalism and uh from the technical standpoint. They've been working really hard to make it uh, you know, to to make it a robust uh uh the video clips. Um I have uh viewed the clip and much appreciated for their efforts. So um and I I So, and I want to take this opportunity to thank the mayor, the council members, city managers, religious leaders, individual and groups joining efforts to make the video clips for this event possible. Lastly, I wanted to ask our resident to tune in the channel three this Friday to join us to pay tribute to for our men and women who sacrificed their lives for the freedom that we now have. So that's why I have Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And next, Councilmember Ho, if you don't mind, or any other councilmember would like to speak? Councilmember Ho, are you ready or? I think you knew that you have to unmute.
I'd like to thank you, Vice Mayor Wen for saying all that. Yes, this is the week of Black April. I just want to add that my hat and salute goes to the heroes of the Vietnam War. Those who, the soldiers who have fallen and, and the American soldiers who fought side by side with the Vietnamese soldiers. And please don't forget April thirtieth, which is in a couple of days from now to remember a moment, one minute of silence to remember all those who lost their lives seeking freedom. And once again, I am you remembered that freedom is not free. I am thankful for this country and I'm thankful to be here. And I'm thankful for our community who have every year join me in commemorating this April thirty the week of April, Black April. And so for the agenda, I would like to mention that for this coming agenda, I just like to talk about if, if, if somebody were to bring up an agenda and it has been approved, I would like to discuss and see if we can talk about change, making a stipulation that whoever brings the agenda up, that person should be in charge of the agenda. That person should have a say as to when the agenda will be brought back. So that's what I want to agendaize the next time. Here to discuss that. I just want that to be agendaized.
So that's a request, right? Am I right? Okay. So I honor that request.
Okay. So that was a request to discuss making a stipulation that whoever proposes the agenda item, that that person gets to decide when the item comes back. And that's to discuss that item at the, at the next council meeting. Councilmember Doe?
Before I have a question real quick, is that, isn't that something we've been doing? I mean, every time the agenda plays on the, item will play on the meeting, the city staff usually contacting the whoever proposed the agenda, right?
It tend to be pushed back to an indefinite amount of time, which I don't think is fair to the person who whose agenda belongs to. And I just want to bring that up to discuss it. I mean, it probably, many people probably didn't notice unless it's your own agenda. So, so whoever owns that agenda, that needs to have a say on when it gets to bring back, be brought back. Or if it's going to be delayed, then that person needs to have a say as to whether or not it needs to be delayed as a courtesy.
Thank you.
Usually the person, usually the, the only person who pays attention to that is, is the person who owns the agenda, whose agenda belongs to. Discuss that when it gets agendaized.
All right. So city clerk, can you continue? If we don't have any other concerns from member and council.
Okay. So I have a yes for Councilmember Doe. Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
The motion carries five to zero to add that to future agenda.
Thank you.
So anything else, Councilmember Ho? I think, okay, that's all. Thank you. Okay. So Councilmember Doe? Councilmember Doe, you still online?
He might have gotten booted off.
All right. So I can go back to Councilmember Doe later. So Councilmember Menzo?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to let, let the public know that we had another. We really don't have a name for it, but it's another community faith based group tackling the homeless issue. And we had a pretty good, another pretty good turnout. And I was pretty pleased with the with the, the other contributions of the public and also want to thank city manager Marwan Youssef for being there. And our police department for supporting the, the community, homeless liaison officers. It's, it's, it's really nice to see how, how, how much the community is coming together. And, and really there was a lot of people really offering, raising their hands and really volunteering to do their part somehow to, to help us, help the, the cause. It's a, it just makes, it makes me feel good to see that. So I want to thank thank everybody that was there in attendance and, and just, I think that good things are they're going to offer, be able to offer a homeless population, some really good help and services. We have a Laundry Love coming up, I think, the twenty ninth. Where we're going to, they're going to offer to do laundry service for families. I think it's off of Springdale. So some of, some of services like that really can help our community. And that's just the beginning. There's a lot of other conversations that are being had about how services that we can provide, they can provide for, for the homeless population. So so I'm really happy for that. I just want to, we don't have an agenda item right now. I just want to thank all the staff for all their hard work. You know, they go above and beyond like always. Thank, thanks for the city council for all your hard work as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate all the, all, all the council members comment. I really appreciate that you all recognize our staff for their dedication and I, I agree with that. I think we, we have good staff. We have a good management team, a go above and beyond their duty. I think that, that really, that really benefit our community. This Friday is April thirtieth. So this is a day I, I agree with Councilmember Ho, I agree with Vice Mayor that this is a day that we, we want to honor the sacrifices of fifty eight thousand American soldier during the Vietnam War and more than two hundred fifty thousand South Vietnamese soldier sacrificed their life for freedom. And I myself feel, feel really thankful for this country helping us. So this is a time that I think that we commemorate Fourth of Saigon, we honor the sacrifices of our men and women. And I think it's really sad day for the Vietnamese American community. But I think we all hope that in the future Vietnam will be free. But I want to thank the support from the community. I want to honor all the sacrifices. One more time of fifty eight thousand American soldier and hundred thousand of South Vietnamese soldier and and everyone who fought for freedom. So like Councilmember Ho mentioned, that freedom was not free. We had to fight for it and we continue to fight for it. So with that, I adjourn the meeting to honor.
Councilmember Doe is back.
Oh, sorry. So Councilmember Doe, so we believe we lost you and now you came back. So your, so this is your turn.
I lost a connection, so I have to run over three other devices before I get this one.
All right, okay.
So well, thank you very much for your patience and I really appreciate that. And I wish to start out with, with, I want to congratulate Mr. Jake Ngo for your appointment to the interim director of Public Work. Heard a lot about your good work. We'll finally see that you got appointed to the position of interim director of Public Work. Just, I just want to echo what has been said by the, by the entire council in relation to the Black April. You know, I just want to take this moment and ask each and every one of the resident of city Westminster to take a moment to reflect and commemorate the sacrificed, ultimate sacrifice of the American servicemen as well as the South Vietnam military personnel as well as the allies who sacrificed during the Vietnam War. And I just want to take this moment to thank city staff for your hard work, especially the city clerk, Ms. Corn, to to make the Black April videos, virtual video. And it's going to be broadcast soon. I greatly appreciate that. And I just want to respect the council, each and every one of you for obey the restriction and just as much as we want to go out there and join the community to commemorate the Black April, but with a lot of restraint, we do that with videotapes as very admirable. I have received a lot of complaint from a different various group in the community saying that we approve permit for one group and not the other to participate in the Black April on, at the Freedom Park. And I was told by the city staff that that is not the case. We have not approved any permit for that particular area. So with that, thank you and I wish everybody great health.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Doe. I greatly appreciate that. With that, I adjourn the meeting. The next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, May Paul at seven P M. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.